Good morning, it's 8:30, I'll call the meeting to order, looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move and approve.
We have a motion to approve as presented by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Citizens to be heard, are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner Wayland, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. We have the minutes and Board of Appeal and Equalization minutes from June 12th and June 19th. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Haney, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Employee longevity awards. All right, this morning we have Delaine Vogel. Delaine, you want to come up? And Julie can come in too. Delaine, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition for your service to Clay County and its citizens, 20 years, thank you very much.
I'd like to say a couple of words, Delaine's been with us for 20 years, she's been half-time with us, we've job shared with Georgia, but we've been very fortunate, we get her full-time here starting at the end of July, and we're pretty excited about that, she's been awesome. A lot of changes at the new jail, and she's looking forward to it, and she's got a great attitude, and we're very happy to have her full-time, so.
Brad Erickson? Good morning, Brad. This plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition for the 25 years of service that you've given Clay County and its citizens, thank you very much.
Happy to have served the last 17 years of Brad's 25 with the Highway Department. There's no design that's too tough for Brad, he's a very skilled, highly intelligent designer, very good at the CAD software, works hard out in the summertime, and we sure appreciate everything he does for us.
The next item, we'd like to recognize the $625 that has been given to Partnership for Health and Rethink Mental Health in honor of Gina Noldy, memory of Gina Noldy. So thank you very much to all of those individuals that have given their gifts to that organization, those organizations. Our next item is the request for approval to contract with an attorney during Attorney Melton's deployment. Brian Melton, I see Pam's with you as well today?
She is here. Good morning, all.
Good morning, Brian.
So as you probably are already aware, but, you know, I would say, I've been in the National Guard now, I'm in 27 years, and so there is a deployment that's upcoming with the 34th Infantry Division, there'll be about 750 approximately soldiers that'll go from the state of Minnesota, mostly to Kuwait, some to Jordan. I expect that I will probably head up there, I'm expecting I will head up to the Jordan Mission, which will be a handful of people who'll go to that area. And so, with that said, I'm expecting to leave, I've already given notice really to my office to let them know, I had a two-week training in Camp Ripley on the 10th of July, I'll go over on a leader's recon over to Kuwait and Jordan with several other individuals just to get a better understanding of the mission, that type of thing. And then somewhere approximately mid-September, later September, I think we have a going-away ceremony scheduled for 28th of September, we'll go down for a period of time to Fort Hood, Texas to do some train-up, and then after that head over. So approximately October, mid-October timeframe through August will be the timeframe that I'm gone. And so, what I am asking for, I would expect by October 1st, I would defer my salary, just because I don't know the exact dates and everything, but by October 1st I would defer my salary. I'm asking for approval, I think I listed as a contract attorney, but really it's a temporary attorney. When I deployed before, we looked to hire an attorney that with an understanding, that person knew they would only be there temporarily through or up to that one-year timeframe, that they would understand that they wouldn't be part of the union, that they would be subject, allowed to have benefits. And so I'm looking, requesting to do that by deferring my salary, I know we'll have plenty of money in the budget to cover that. I am also requesting as part of this whole thing, as I leave, Pam Harris, my chief assistant for the Criminal Division, will take over as the acting county attorney. I am asking for a raise for her as well. We do have precedent for both of these when I deployed before, I think when Michelle Lawson was previously my chief assistant, we did give a raise to her, about $12,000. And I was thinking about it, I believe, just because it was six years ago, it was my last deployment, I think it would be appropriate if we did it at $14,000. Just the amount of people we have, it's different, we have had a lot of change, just some turnover, you know, that happens over time, so there's a lot of things that have happened, and so I'm asking for a raise for her, really to go effective immediately, just because I plan after, so basically I'm gone for the month of most of July, I'll come back, I'll be here maybe a little bit, but I am trying to take some vacation time with the family, and my son's moving to college, so I'll be taking him down there too, so I don't know that I'll be here that much in August as well. So, really I think if we can look to get her the raise immediately, look to start hiring somebody to fill those positions, and I'm going to kind of be in and out, so the schedule's a little bit in flux. So those are the two things I'm asking the board to look to approve, would be allowing for a, really a temporary attorney to be hired under the same provisions that we did previously, and a raise, temporary raise for Pam Harris as well, in the amount of $14,000.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Well, I think Brian is accurate in terms of what we did in the past, when, you know, in terms of what we've done, so, and certainly going to need to have some shoes down there to help out that while you're gone. So I think we'll do these separately, Madam Chair, and I would move the authorization to hire a temp attorney in the absence, in Mr. Melton's absence.
Okay, we have a motion to approve hiring a temporary attorney by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland, discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
And make the motion for the pay increase.
We have a motion to approve the pay increase.
Second.
And a second.
Yeah, I just have a question, I, typically we line that up to someplace on the pay grid, don't we, and so, I know the dollar amount you're talking about, but can we correlate that to where it would be on a step or something?
That was my same question as well.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we can certainly work with them to that today and figure out an exact amount on a pay grid.
Yeah, it should, you know, it should tie to, like we pay everybody else.
I think I was more, yeah, I just knew where we had come in basically, the amount, I would imagine we probably did that last time as well, so if we could just do that, tie it in, but that, I think that amount is an appropriate amount, and again, I think we're well-budgeted for it, so I think, I think that would be.
So that budget, that amount would align with that of what, you know, the acting would be?
Sure.
Is that what the motion can be?
I think that'd be funny. We'll look that up.
Okay, questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thanks, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. If we don't see you, good luck.
Nancy, are you expecting your party to be present?
Hi, did you contact them? Oh, normally that's what we do. So, maybe not, do you want me just go ahead or?
I mean, we can go ahead, let's take care of it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a request from Elmer and Patricia Zitso to repurchase a tax forfeiture property, and we have a letter that's been submitted on behalf of them from their son that explains the issue, do you have anything to add?
Pretty much, the taxes were not paid from 2014, and so we did our tax forfeiture process on them, which includes serving the property, it is a rental property I see, I think he lives next door, they have a homestead to it. The total amount that we're going to need is $5,372.87, and that's about how I know.
And they haven't paid that yet, that would have to.
No, correct, correct, we wouldn't fill out the state deed until we have the money.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I can just tell the board the legal process, at this stage of the forfeiture requires a board approval in order for us to essentially transfer that back, so there is a repurchase process prior to this stage where they could have just walked in and paid up the taxes, but at this point, that's why it's before the board.
I think one of our requirements is that if, you know, it's either we do something for public good, or, you know, and public good can also mean getting it back on the tax rolls.
Exactly.
You know, and I, so I, you know, so I think if, in my, you know, in the past what we've done, as long as they're willing to pay those back taxes upfront and keep it current, but I do believe that we've also put a timeframe to make that payment.
Sure.
Haven't we, Nancy? So what would be appropriate for them to make that exact dollar amount that you suggest? Is a week from now, or?
I would say a week or two weeks, either one would be fine.
You know, I think that just in light of a holiday, if they were to put something in the mail, it may be delayed, so I think I would be comfortable with two, a two-week from today.
And just put July 15th maybe as a.
Okay, I would, I'd move approval of the request to repurchase with the deadline of July 15th to make the final payment, early for the back pay of the taxes.
We have a motion to approve with the condition of the date.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney, further discussion? Let's just make sure that, can you make a phone call to?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
For the discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is Chief Deputy Lansum and Lieutenant Amptin, a request for approval to fill a vacancy for full-time deputy sheriff, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Douglas, this morning.
Mark is going to be handling this process, so I'll let him speak.
Okay.
About, well, spring to last year we came to the board for this particular position, we did hire somebody at that time, we did have him go through the training process and things like that, he was working for us, and about June 22nd of last month, he decided to resign to pursue some other opportunities in his life, therefore this position has opened up again, we are coming to the board to request to replace him. We will have some additional costs with this, just slight amount, just in the uniforms and things like that, and that's your standard startup cost. We will attempt to use the uniforms that we did just purchase for him in the event we do get somebody of the same stature, we're not going to look for somebody with the same stature, but if it happens to work, it works out well, we can save some costs that way. There'd be just very minimal costs as far as paying out his vacation and his comp time, if I recall correctly, it would be, I think, 40 hours or something of that nature, we're not going to be paying out any sick time, so very minimal costs associated with this.
It was during his probationary period that he left.
Okay, all right, discussion.
Well, even from a budgetary standpoint, that 40 hours that you're paying, it's going to probably take you a little bit longer than that to fill it anyway.
Yeah, the process or interviews and stuff like that's going to take.
It'll be vacant for a while, which there would be no pay.
Right, it's rather, it's rather budget-neutral, even the cost of the uniforms and things like that, it shouldn't have the budget whatsoever.
Madam Chair, move approval of the.
We have a motion to approve the request by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our item number five is support of cost share of application for a build grant, we have Bob Zimmerman from the City of Morehead and David Overbaugh. Good morning, Dr. Bob.
Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate the time this morning, so the city is partnering with MINDAT again to submit an application for federal funding for the 11th Street Railroad underpasses, that's for both the, both of the BN tracks that go through downtown. This new federal program is called BUILD, I'm not sure you may be familiar with that, it's the latest version of what was previously Tiger Federal Grants, it's a, this solicitation again is a nationwide solicitation, so it's highly competitive, there's about 1.5 billion available, the maximum award for this program is 25 million in federal funds, so we're working on an application for that due the middle of July. The most recent cost estimate that we've been using for the 11th Street project is about 52 million, MINDAT has committed a minimum of 18 million towards that, they're looking to see if they can do a little more, again, the maximum federal grant is 25 million, BN's share currently is estimated at 1.5, we're asking for the county's support for half a million, all of that adds up to 45, so, 45 million, so our gap would be about seven between the city and MINDAT, we would need to identify those sources, which certainly do. One of the criteria for the application is, includes partnerships, the county has generously supported the city on applications like this in the past, and so we're seeking your support once again for the, the same as the previous commitment of a half million dollars towards the project. We will, regardless of this grant application, be starting the environmental documentation for the project later this year, both the city and MINDAT have committed funds to do that work, so we'll begin that later in the year, and working towards trying to fund the project and move it onto construction, so, be happy to answer any questions, but again, we're looking for your generous support of our application once again.
Questions?
I have a question in regards to the balance, seven or eight million roughly, is that something that could be funded through bonding through the legislature?
It could be funded through additional state resources such as bonding or city resources?
Okay, correct.
Okay.
Well, I've been on record for a long time, but I think that's probably the most important public safety road project that could happen in the City of Morehead, I firmly believe that, that, and, and I, we can't get this done fast enough as far as I am concerned, and I fully support this and this, I would, I would move that we join in support of the grant application.
Move a motion to support, approved by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland, further discussion?
I was at a meeting first fall last weekend, they, I see the Minnesota Department, state's already got Morehead Honor Pass on their list as far as for building application, under the build application projects, so they're already looking at that to fund that thing, so.
I think the one of the real advantages that we have with this project is that MINDAT is very committed to this project, and so that brings a different set of resources and maybe even a different priority to the project. We are working also with MINDAT on doing a realignment of the Trunk Highway through downtown, so what that would involve is shifting the Trunk Highway from 8th Street and Center Avenue to Main and 11th Street, put the Trunk Highway designation right on the path for this underpass, so hopefully that shift will really bring some additional MINDAT resources to the project.
I know we did talk about this last year at our Highway Committee, and it was fully supported by the Highway Committee at that time, it's, the level of service would be increased greatly as well as the safety, so I can stand behind it as well.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, I mentioned the importance of it from a public safety standpoint, but it also would be a tremendous boost from the economy standpoint locally here, when we, commerce is always slowed when we can't go north and south with this traffic because of trains, and so I, not, public safety is even a bigger value, but their commerce would also see a real improvement, I think, in that central part of our downtown area, so.
Do we have, isn't our five-year plan?
Well, we have, we had the 500,000 in the plan, didn't we? Because, because.
Because we, I thought we actually authored, I thought we actually supported and authorized that 500,000 before.
I don't remember that Honor Pass being in there.
Well, Madam Chair, there's been two 500-dollar, 500,000 dollar contributions, one I believe was for the 21st Street, and the other was for the.
School.
School, out on 12th Avenue, that was a recent 500,000, so, it's kind of a daily routine for the city to ask for 500,000.
We could always ask for more.
Further discussion.
You know, one other question I got, so when is this project planned, I mean, when would the money be needed, or what?
So this, we would move as quickly as the money would be available, so if we were fortunate enough to get this grant award, we'd be in high gear, we'd still have to do the environmental documentation, the property acquisition is probably a couple of years away from actual construction, even with a grant award, without it, we're going to continue to move forward, but it'll be a much slower pace. So, a project of this magnitude, working with railroad, you know, four to five years would not be unrealistic.
Further discussion? We do have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you. Do you have one you can miss sign, or?
Brian has got one.
Okay, all right.
You want to take that with you?
Okay. You'll get it, that's your business.
Well, good luck on that, Bob, get it done.
Request for additional funds to complete the Lomar on the Buffalo River, Brian Bird.
Hey Bob, is this the city's new priority project? I forgot about that.
I wasn't ready for that, actually.
I couldn't resist.
I could have been around you too long, I guess. Well, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission, what you have before you, and Tim Anderson just gave me this last week, so I threw it on the agenda real quick, if you remember, it was kind of probably the middle of last year, that Tim came before you and the MAP revision for the area, and I think this is north of Highway 10 out there, if I remember right, and you guys authorized $75,000 to do that Lomar study, to try to take that out of the floodplain, and as you see, Houston is an area that has been working on it and has spent the 75,000, and they're saying now in order to complete it, we need $29,902 more to do that, which I guess is not uncommon, but it does put you between a rock and hard spot, so, you know much about it certainly, or more than I do, so.
Well, you know, speaking from the planning commission side, there's been a lot of planning issues that have kind of come up because of this issue, and so obviously we felt it was necessary to expend the money to fix the problem, it's unfortunate that it's going to cost, you know, almost $30,000 more to finalize it, but I think it, you know, we do have money and do it, and I think we should see this, this a little bit. Do they have any sort of timeframe on it?
No, I think, I think they're kind of really waiting to continue their study on it, I did not talk or speak with.
Greg.
Mr. Peelman, yeah, but I guess Tim had been dealing with the mon, I don't know that our county engineer has been engaged in this too recently.
No, I guess I haven't, we utilize the same data, and they do all our hydrolog analysis for our bridges and culverts and big projects, we are evaluating for us as well.
Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, I agree with your comments about, we've seen an awful lot of questions regarding the floodplain in that area, and I, with what we know today, and the hydrology and all of that stuff that's available, and knowing the, I think the letter of MAP revision, I think we have a good chance of seeing some correct changes, if not, it still is important to make sure that we have the accurate information with the latest science available, and, so I think we should also move forward with.
I was just looking back on our, when we approved that 75,000 back in November of last year, I mean, we didn't have a bid from anybody to do the study, so we just said we'll put 75,000 to it, so, we really didn't know what it was going to cost to do it, so.
The only, oh, I'm sorry, Frank.
No, go ahead.
The only other, the only other thing would be, is if we, you know, because we put a substantial amount in here, and it does deal with water issues, I wonder if we shouldn't once again look at asking Buffalo Red to also help maybe fill some of that extra gap of the 29,000 that's needed, and I hope Jenny, Commissioner Mojo serves as our liaison to that group, but I, you know, I would suggest that we ask her to inquire to them about seeking some, a cost share on the, at least on the remaining balance.
I'm fine with that ask, I would maybe in the, in light of time sensitive, you know, if we were to make some sort of motion of support, I, you know, I don't have a problem going to the Buffalo Red, but I don't want that to delay what this.
And my intention wasn't to have it either a cost share or not at all, that's so, but I just think that.
You can definitely ask.
I'll certainly reach out to Bruce and Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell and inquire about that, I know they've been really good about it, so maybe your motion could.
They met last night, so we'll meet in two weeks.
Yeah.
I do see that it's at 226 hours is the estimate.
I'll make the motion to approve the request with the request to Buffalo Red for assistance.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request with reaching out to Buffalo Red as well, second by Commissioner Haney, just a question, if we are to cover the full 299, where would we come up with the funds from?
Madam Chair, we would just have to take it out of the.
Okay, all right, any other question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we waiting on Brian for the 910?
He was, Madam Chair, he was going to come back.
Okay, perfect, we'll do some committee reports to get us there, Commissioner Campbell?
Okay, I can do that. On June 26th, Tuesday, we did have a scheduling of events meeting for the Correctional Facility and Law Enforcement Center, and that, we got a little bit more in-depth as to the planning of what's going to happen on those days, so we're getting closer, and I believe we're looking at.
closer and I believe we're looking at sending out those invitations here coming up July 9th. And it's going to be a couple of full days of, of meet and greet and, and celebrating these new facilities open. So we're looking forward to that. Then on the 27th, I had a Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Meeting in Perrin. And I think it was the shortest meeting we've had since we've been involved with that group.
It was.
I think it was like a total of 25 minutes. And the, every, you know, the financials, everything is going on schedule. We did approve, uh, what they referred to as a energy audit, an engagement letter for an energy audit. That was for $29,700, but we're guaranteed payment of half of that back right away. And then with the recommended changes, we're going to see that full amount plus a lot of savings going into the future for upgrading some of the old style of lighting and other things that's in that facility. And then we, we talked a little bit about the Tuffy's contract for steam and we're now going to be on, on, because we rescinded the contract with them, we're, we're actually able to protect ourselves from natural gas prices. When the natural gas prices get really low, it hurts us. And when it gets high, it helps us. So we're, but we're looking for some medium ground there. So, so we approved that. On, then on Thursday morning, we had a Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting and we had it out at the landfill. And we received a report from Andrew Fayle from Wink regarding the water sampling report. And there was a couple of minor issues there, but nothing of major concern. And they're going to keep monitoring those couple of wells that had some problems. And then we did, we did take a tour of the facility and the landfill itself. And I, I just want to really compliment Larry and, and his group out there. That place for a landfill was really clean. I mean, they, they were really, you can imagine how landfills look, but as we drove the entire perimeter, we saw nothing outside. We saw one of, one of our county people was out on, on the highway looking, trying to find trash to pick up, and there was none. So now obviously, we have these certain occasions when you get 25 mile an hour winds or something where that happens. But they really do a, a good job and I really want to commend them for their, their efforts in keeping that place orderly for the neighbors. So. And then that afternoon, we had a Metro Flood Diversion Authority meeting. And that also, this time, was a very short meeting. There's, there's not a lot going on right now. We did, we did get some updated timelines on, on both the environmental reviews that are being done by Minnesota DNR and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And they're trying to correlate those so that we can have, they can have one public meeting probably to be held in Morehead. And I think the timeline on that is, let's see, sometime in August, they're looking at that joint public meeting. And then the final supplemental EIS, looking at October for Minnesota DNR, and we're looking at late September for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And other than that, there was not much going on. There, we, we did get a report from Michael Redlinger on the search committee for a, a executive director. And that process is still moving forward. I know they were down to interviewing three candidates. And I don't know what the outcome of that. I had been surveying on that, but the date that they picked for those, I could not be there. But there's going to be some follow-up interviews. That's going to be done by the full board anyway, as I understand it. So. That, oh, and I did want to mention, I, I, with these payments that we've, latest payments that we've just got on, on both of our facilities, the Law Enforcement Center, according to our payment, payment request, latest payment request, is 94% complete, which is getting right to the end. And the correctional facility is at 79% complete based on dollars billed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday, we all attended the Clay County Employees' Picnic, which was a wonderful event. And whoever calculated the amount of hamburgers, hot dogs and, and soy burgers did well because just about everything was consumed in the process. So it was very well done.
Veggie burgers.
Yep. And it was good to see everyone and whatnot. Then on Wednesday, I attended the Diversion and Authority Flood Finance Committee, and they approved routine bills. How, they weren't very much, but, and we also received the updated timeline referenced by Commissioner Campbell. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Uh, I too attended the picnic and I really want to thank the Clay County employees for attending that. There was a good turnout for that. Wednesday, I went to Drug Court. Thursday, at Tim Magnuson's retirement. Friday, I went to Fergus Falls for the West Central Transportation Advisory Committee. And that was an interest to me, given the projects that are going to be happening in, in our county for the next eight years. You know, we're looking at the signal light that's going to go on up here in '75. That's going to be this year. 2022, they were talking about replacing culverts from Barnesville to Breckenridge. 2023, the Highway 9 from Barnesville to I-94 is going to be updated in 2025. 75 and 10 improvements are going to happen. So it's quite, quite a few projects in this county. A lot of stuff, the, the money, there was $400 million approved this year for highway projects. All four of them that were approved are all in the metro area. So that was sort of interesting. There's, if they get additional funds, there's three other projects they got on the list, and one of them is also in the metro area. So it's a lot of money being spent in, spent in the metro area. Talked about mowing and truck highway, that the time limit is pretty much just August 1st to August 31st, you know, and there was some, some concern about the time length, you know, that they'd like to get some of that hay a little bit sooner and stuff like that. But because of different restrictions, that one didn't pass, I guess. Other things they talked about, I thought was very interesting. They're talking about autonomous vehicles, you know, being, coming on the roads and stuff like that. And they were thinking about, well, if those Uber cars and stuff like that are going to be used, you need less parking garages, less parking spaces. There'd be 30% more people that don't drive now probably able to get rides and stuff like that. So it's very interesting how, how the world could change in a matter of, I don't know, five, 10 years from now, when we have all these vehicles. You know, I was just starting to think too, you know, if we'd have one, my wife would be in that, who she yell at, you know?
She'd still yell at you.
She'd still yell at you. How that works out, you know? Who do you yell at if you got a driverless car? They were concerned also that'd be more, more drinking too. That you'd be having a vehicle to take you home, that there are be, you could stay for a few more drinks and stuff like that. So that was a concern too, that, um, a couple of things that were passed, you know, the, um, as far as on the double yellow line, that you can pass a bicyclist on the double yellow line if he's on the road. You can go around, pass a bicyclist, you know, and buses can go into bike lanes to pick up people. So a couple of different rules that were changed. Other than that, it was a, it was a good meeting. There's, uh, there's concern to pill payments. You know, they get reassessed every five years, you know, when some of the land's going to government, government lands being bought up, you know, every five years they're being reassessed, I guess, to how, what our pill payments. And I saw in the AMC magazine that there was a class action suit. I was wondering, you have to join that to get in the pill payments? I don't know if you've read that or not, but I think that's something we should get involved in, you know, because if we don't elect to join the class, we will not be included in that class action suit. So, because they were saying some, some of the pill payments weren't properly paid. So there's probably some funds there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gross. It is 9:10, so we have a closed session advertised, so.
Moving to close.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whalen to close the session.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney for the discussion. We are closed. Okay.
Okay, let's see. I had the Prairie Lakes meeting too, and Commissioner Campbell already reported on that, that it was good and short. And we've had pretty good news there in the last several meetings or most of this year. So that's, that's a big turnaround from where we were a year or so ago. Had the solid waste meeting, had the tour of the landfill. It, it is impressive how they take care of that place. And I would recommend everybody go out and take a tour. It's, it's, it's interesting and it's pretty impressive how they care for it. So everything is in order and neat and the buildings, the grounds, it's, it's very impressive. Uh, let's see. I attended Tim Magnuson's retirement and the county picnic. I thought that went well. I think the employees really appreciate that. Everything went well and the food was good. And let's see, I think that was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting in regards to the planning and zoning transition with Tim's retirement. We met with Homestead Planning and, and kind of brainstormed what needs to be done from the county's end to make sure there's the online access to files and GIS for, for them. We did discuss the days of the week or month that would be appropriate to have someone in the office. As you know, this is kind of something that we're, you know, going to take feedback from those in that office downstairs. If we need more or less presence, we'll add that. But it was determined to have at least one day a month and, and, or two days a month. And obviously, the Planning Commission is another time that they will be in. And we talked about adding some virtual hours in regards to questions. So we kind of feel like we were able to address all of the needs. If anything comes up, you know, we can reevaluate it going forward. I attended the Lakes and Prairies meeting last week as well in Breckenridge. We had a spotlight on the Family and Consumers' Community Services Program with Wilken County staff. That food drop that they had was largely successful. The need for food is, is, is great among some of those people down there. We had two new board members that were approved. Chris Peterson from Breckenridge takes the place of someone who moved and Mary Daly took place. The mayor of Morehead reassigned her to Councilwoman Durant was serving, so now Mary is on that. We talked a little bit about the disaster recovery grant that was applied for, that was approved. And in 2018, they realigned the travel policy per diem rate to what the state commissioner's rate was instead of the federal rate. So it's, it's about 40% less for, for employees that are going out, but that's what the state, the state level is. Then we also had the executive director performance review and discussed her compensation. There were, it was a very good review. The board is overall quite pleased with, with what Lori Schwartz is doing there. They did give her a 1% increase on her salary. We talked about the work camp that will be happening in Wilken County. And there's about 250 youth that will be going there to be doing service learning projects and they'll be staying at the school. So that's a, that's an exciting thing going on there. And that concludes my reports. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The meeting, we had a ribbon cutting planning meeting that was progressing really well. Invitations are going to go out now. We had said a long time ago, we'd, we'd send those out on July 9th because we didn't want them too far in advance. And remember, I'll just remind you that ribbon cutting again is July 24th at 10:00 a.m. And the day prior will be a media day and, and then also some special tour groups that will be coming through, people that had worked on planning and the other meetings with the Law Enforcement Center and the Juvenile Center. I'm sorry, not the Juvenile Center, the, the Correctional Facility. So I, we've, we've gone over invitation lists. If you have a thought of someone that we might be missing, although how many pages is, is it that we have? About how many? Six pages? About 150 or something like that? So we've tried to hit the township officers, the council officers, the different groups.
Well, the whole county's invited.
Pretty much. Well, yeah, the whole county is invited. So we want that to be known as well. So, and hopefully we'll get some additional press with that on Monday with the media days and for the ribbon cutting.
Are we doing tours at different hours or is this, is that what the plan is or?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, how we're going to do it that day is the people will be stationed throughout the buildings so that the public and, and the groups can, can, I don't want to say wander, but they will then move through the building and stop and at these different posts. So there'll be probably eight to 10 spots within the buildings where they'll stop and ask questions. Because people move around and they find things different, interests in different things. So that's how it's going to be working. So there'll be people at those posts like from 10 to 6 at night, so.
They're going to be directed a certain way throughout there so they, they enter and exit the same.
Okay. Good idea. Then I met with, with the recorder, Kimberly, on the recorder's budget. That's new to her. And she is, I'd like to say she's a perfectionist, thinks that he wants things done right.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's what we need.
Yeah, very good. Commissioner Mosso? Also talked about the meeting we had with Ben Olson. And he will be the, your planning director for the next few months. And we set up a schedule. And she also indicated the, the virtual time. When he's not in the office that week, we will have hours for virtual time with him. So if a person that is applying for something or if a staff officer needs to sit and visit with him on the web, he can do that. So we're, we're going to see how things work and keep a very close eye on it. So. Visited with Kevin Kassenberg. We had a meeting with he and Solid Waste. I don't think Kirk was able to make that highway. And Lori, in regards to, if you remember right, this, they were given an additional $18,000 grant if the county would match those dollars. And we worked out a system where we could work that money back in and, and provide some services. And we just kind of tightened up the flow of that to make sure that the billing process was in place and things. So that's gone along very well. And he said there's a very good chance that they may get that again next year. So. And then I had a meeting with, with the chief deputy, Steve Lansum, in regards to the unfortunate drowning that occurred last week out at the Buffalo. He wanted some, a little bit of direction on some information that was being released. And then after that, I met with the chief of police in regards to the same issue because of, of the flow and, because that was the Police Youth Bureau involvement in that. And very, very unfortunate experience. And I guess we can't say enough how many good things that the Police Youth Bureau has done over the years. And we talked about that. Then we had a regional county administrators meeting here in Morehead last Friday. So Steve and I both attended that and found that to be very useful in exchange of information. It was just a, a real strategic time to talk about, oh, how commissioners treat us and things like that. A little humor there, folks.
Very little.
Very little.
Then I met with Darren and Steve Lansum, the in chief deputy, and some just personnel issues, working with, with the service office. Very positive things. And the, oh, I received an invitation... And the, oh, I received an invitation, and I forwarded that email to you folks from the city, reference a ribbon cutting, I believe it's on the, on Sun 21st Street, but I think it's on the 16th of July.
Yep.
So, okay, you have all that. And, and also, excuse me, did somebody say something?
I said 9:00 a.m. on the.
Oh, 9:00 a.m., okay. And then we are progressing, and I've been in communication with your chair in regards to a search, and I know the two commissioners that represent the juvenile advisory board have, are aware of this too, but we have sent out a internal advertisement to replace the director of juvenile detention, Steve over there, so that's going to move fairly fast, because I think it's only open for like seven days internally in, in the county. And I know this is a department head, so we'll want some direction from you folks as to the involvement in setting up the internal interviews, and, and for right now, we're filling the vacancy over there, so I guess I do feel a little involvement there. We'll want Steve involved, because he'll have to supervise that position, but the position works for you folks, and we'll want your involvement as well, so we can work through that and see where it goes as we progress with setting up the interview things, so.
Did you say that just internal?
It's just internal. It's just internal. And the reason why we did that or talked about it, I guess we visited about that, we feel that's a specialized function, and there's a lot going on over there right now with the building expansion, and we feel that there's enough expertise within the county, the supervisors that Steve has and maybe others that have worked within the juvenile justice system, that we would have a, a good selection for a candidate.
Yeah, Commissioner.
Well, I, yeah, it sounds like that'll move fairly quickly, and since Kevin and I are, that's our committee, I think we should be part of that, and Jenny is the board chair, and then probably Steve, since it's been his operation, and that, you know, that could be a panel, so it's.
Okay. Well, what we'll do with that.
Well, I, I have said that I felt that because of your involvement and because it's a department head, I'd like to as chair, if it does result in a public meeting, I'm fine with it being advertised.
No, we can just force it as a public meeting, so it's fine.
Madam Chair, what, that's what we'll do then, is we'll set, we'll, we'll work with you guys on, on setting up who should be on that committee to interview, and then we will advertise it as a public meeting, so we can have all three. Or, what's that?
Might as well have a whole.
Oh, I was going to say, or a whole board, if, if you so desire. I mean, it's a very important position, you know, so we can do it that way. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Steve, do you have anything?
Madam Chair, thank you. I did spend some time with Darren, Jennifer, in, in discussing the opening externally, that the position is set to close right now on July 8th, that's Sunday, and so we'll see, see what kind of applicants we get. I think, as I mentioned, I think there's a number of people in, in the county that are qualified, that have enough information about whether they're at the facility now or, or moved on, and so we'll see what kind of applications that, that we get. Again, I, I was able to participate at the Minnesota Regional, Regional County Administrator meeting. That was very beneficial, it was nice to meet a number of, of the people that I'll be running into over the next few years, and, and one of the things that, that they did mention, that I would be hoping to get permission from the, from the board, is there's a program through the, for Minnesota, I think, Association of County Administrators, the Pathways Program, where they have a year of mentorship and, and training that goes on for, for first year county administrators, and so if it would be all right with the board, I would like to request to be allowed to do that.
Okay. I, I think it's a worthwhile opportunity, surely, I think you can take what you want from it and learn as you go, so I don't know if the rest of the boards, what's that, is there a dollar allocated?
No, I just got the information last night, so I haven't.
Okay, maybe just bring it to us next week and we can.
I think, Madam Chair, your main costs were the trouble costs, and it is in Little Falls, so it's a reasonable closeness, so it should cut down on.
All right. And then, does the board want to wait till next week or approve?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, but Commissioner Wayland, a second by Commissioner Haney. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Is that?
That concludes mine.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to my report, that I did want to mention the county picnic as well, and I thought there was a great, great turnout, and it was very hot, flipping burgers.
You did a good job.
And then, and then I also want to recognize Tim and his, his retirement party that occurred last Thursday. I was, had conflicts with other meetings, so I was unable to be there, but I wish I could have been, so I'm glad it was held for.
Thank you. Further discussion, anything else? All right, we are adjourned.